I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, good evening, thank you everybody. So as this is sort of our first meeting of the new school year, which starts July 1, I'd like to welcome Jack, who is now our new superintendent, and Joe, who is now our new assistant superintendent, to the table. Welcome.
Thank you. It's great to be here. It's been a short period since graduation, but a lot has happened. We've been working hard in the last couple of weeks, so looking forward to the year.
Yeah, it seems like we just ended. All right, we will move on then to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, David. Any discussion? Jack, do you want to talk about any of the new appointments?
Sure, just a quick update on each one of the new teachers that we've hired. Megan Stanfield's grade four at Fuann Hollow, she comes to us with a bachelor's and master's degree from Southern Connecticut State University. Amanda Serino, grade two at Monroe L., had some experience, she was a long-term sub at Monroe Elementary School last year. Olivia Presko, previously taught in the Monroe Schools and we're happy to have her back. She'll be joining us as a Spanish teacher at Jacquey Hollow. Samantha Jennings is going to be joining us in math at Jacquey Hollow, and she's coming to us all the way from the Mission Hill Middle School in Santa Cruz, California.
Wow.
And Amanda Friedlander will be joining us in grade one of Fuann Hollow, she has a bachelor's and master's degree from the University of Connecticut. And lastly, Mackenzie Yusko will be joining us in grade two at Stepney Elementary School. She has a bachelor's and master's degree from Fairfield University.
Okay, and where do we stand now on hires?
We are in very good shape. We have two positions for pairs that are vacant at this point, and we also have to rehire for a security guard at Massey. Other than that, we're all set.
Great, perfect. Does anybody have any other questions on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Don't know if anybody has any committee reports this evening? Everybody's kind of off probably with those. Public participation? All right, hearing none, wow, we are moving through. We will move on to the report of the superintendent then.
So the first thing that we have for you is an enrollment and demographic update, and you have a handout in front of you that has some yellow highlights and a green highlight. And we just wanted to keep you informed about where we are with class sizes. The yellows, we had been watching very carefully, and we had reassigned some teaching positions to those yellow areas. The first one on the upper left there, grade one at Fuann Hollow, has ninety-seven students. We originally had four sections there, so there were going to be about twenty-five students per class. With fifth teacher, we were able to bring that down to nineteen. Grade three at Fuann Hollow, again about a hundred students, and we had twenty-fives there, so we were able to bring that back down to twenty. And then at Monroe L., similarly forty-nine students in grade three, but only two teachers previously, they were going to be at twenty-five, so we were able to reduce that down to sixteen point three. One of the challenges with a small school is when you go from two sections to three sections, there's a wider swing in the size of the classes, and it is a challenge, it's just the virtue of a smaller building. And then lastly, the green that you see up top is an area we've been watching at Stepney Elementary School, the kindergarten. Currently, class sizes there are twenty-one, three sections. We're hoping that that will stay that way. If it gets a little bit larger, we will, we will make it work, but it has been a spot that we've been watching as we progress through the summer. Other than that, the numbers at this point in the year are in flux, especially as you look at the bottom line across the district. We do have a number of families leaving and go other places, and a number of new families coming into register, so there's always some movement as we look at this, at this point in the year. And then the one other piece I have for you is regarding demographics. The company that had previously completed our demographics study, Mylona McBroom, we'd asked them for a quote to, for the board's consideration, if you want to get an updated projection, a ten-year enrollment projection update would be a cost of seventy-five hundred dollars. It's up to the board as to whether or not you want to do that. You know, it's a significant amount of money, and the projections are not perfect. No matter who we hire, it's just not a perfect science. It is a point of reference. The previous study is something that we reference on a regular basis, but just wanted to make the board aware, and also make that option something that is available to you if we chose.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, what's the benefit of it, other than gives us a reference?
It's, it's really a reference point. The last time they did the study, they gave us a high reference point, medium reference point, low reference point. We have been using the medium reference point in all of our projections and the, all the information we've provided to the board. It's one step better than our guesses. And, you know, it does cut through some of the speculation that occurs as we get into these conversations, because our numbers are our budget, our numbers are our class sizes, and it is, it is, you know, all the reference points we have, it's among the most important.
Yeah, sure.
One thing that was interesting about that, I think that it was, you know, it wasn't accurate at all, and, but one thing that was interesting about it was, you know, population is going down, so that, I think that was part of the factors into it, and they were, our numbers, what we actually had, were higher than what they were projecting. It was more about people still moving to Monroe for the schools. So I personally would not vote in favor of spending seventy-five hundred dollars on that, I think. You know, sort of a fist of war, you just, I mean, it's not a reflection on them, it's anybody. They don't really know how many students you're going to have in the future and everything. But it was interesting that Monroe's actual numbers were a lot higher than what they were predicting, it was a reflection on people moving here for the schools.
Right, right.
A positive.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is a game of relativity, you know? As you said, all the demographers, none of them have perfect accuracy, it's a matter of some being more accurate than others, yeah.
Or a better guess.
Mm-hmm, exactly, yeah.
Jack, when you said that they used, they had three tiers, you said you'd been using the medium, the middle one, was, would any of the projections been in the high one, since they were so off, or were they just?
I'd say of the three, the medium has been the closest. It's funny, I was meeting with Jack Chicalini, and I were meeting today, looking at middle school numbers, and we're having a conversation about it. This year, our middle school numbers are down about forty-five, give or take, this shows forty-six. Their projection was for us to be down by sixty. Now, you know, and again, if you look at twenty in a population of seven-hundred-and-fifty, as a percentage, it is relatively small, but it isn't, it's not perfect, it's not a perfect science.
But that was their updated one, their original one, it was a lot different.
Right, right.
From their original.
The time we paid for it, or commissioned it.
Right, so the, the first one they did, it was way off, and then they revised it a couple of years ago, so it was closer, but it's still off. So, because they only take certain things, like they take the population of birth women who are in birthing age, and then they project out, like, who, how many people are going to have. They don't take into account the economy, changes, moving, businesses moving, and any of that type of stuff. They just look at who lives in your town now, how many of those are within birth age, and will they have children? So there's lots of factors that factor into it.
So it sounds like no-go?
I just wonder, probably a lot more, we could put that money in a better use, right?
That's how I feel too.
Very good, and, let's see, the review of the fund and the fund activity statement, Gabby's going to walk you through that.
So, obviously, we're pretty close to closing out 2018, fiscal 2018. There's about thirty-two open purchase orders, again, they primarily relate to utilities. No matter how many times we ask Eversource, they seem to always, for whatever reason, our billing cycle runs from the twenty-third to the twenty-second, and they always leave those last seven days of June for the next year, so we have to approve for that, and so we're waiting for those bills to come in. Obviously, other little things, out, just outplay students, some of the schools just, they didn't bill on time, they just, they're, they're like, oh, well, yeah, we'll get it due, but we're, we're closed on the month of July, or, you know, something crazy like that, so we're just waiting for a few things, and then we should have empty year numbers for you guys, hopefully by the August meeting, but probably more than likely September, but I'm hoping August, we should have everything ready, so let's see. And in summer work, we're, obviously, you can tell from the detour you all had to make, we're in the midst of summer projects, just our general cleaning, a lot of pieces, but also some slightly larger projects. The wood shop here at the high school has been pretty much completely stripped down, and it's in the process of being scrubbed clean. If you ever walked in it and recognized sawdust, you will not see sawdust in there, it's pretty amazing. We also have some other things going on. Jacquey Hollow, we're going to replace the glycol in the system, it's about twenty years old, and that'll hopefully improve the, the quality of our heating. We're also replacing a mixing valve at Fuann Hollow, which will help our hot water and we'll stop getting yelled at by the health department, hopefully, so, things like that, so we're in the midst of that. And that's sort of, I was leaving insurance for last, because I wanted to segue into insurance for Jack. We closed out the year with seven-point-six million dollars in claims, it's better than last year, which had nine-point-two million dollars in claims, so it is better, but I think Jack will attest to the fact that I was very nervous at the end of the year. We've already put in a million dollars into the fund in early July, to go through, you know, the first part of the summer months, where we're only depositing, we deposit the Board of Ed funds via the payroll cycle, because reporting for tax purposes, we need to report both the employer and the employee contribution. So to do that accurately, we have to run everything through payroll, so we are, we did front-load a million dollars into insurance, so that should get us, hopefully, through August, when the teachers come back, and start, and start putting in larger deposits. We had forty-nine claims over twenty-five thousand dollars, and five people over staff loss. We also had a significant number of claims over twenty-five thousand dollars that were strictly related to prescription costs. So not as, not only is the cost of healthcare expensive, but so is the cost of the medication that some people are on, for various factors, so. And, you know, that leads Jack to other.
Yeah, that leads directly into the next item here, the insurance study committee, which you'll also see under new business. So of all the things that we deal with budgetarily, the trend with insurance is that it is the greatest challenge for us, it is the greatest challenge for our employees, it's the greatest challenge for us as a district financially. So Brown &amp; Brown, I had asked them to complete a study for us of our current insurance plan as compared to the state plan, which is another option. They completed that study. There are potential savings there, however, there are some real potential challenges too, and making a change in insurance would not be a simple task. One of the considerations would be that the state plan is, one of the concerns with it is the long-term viability. The state, in our dealings with them, oftentimes, we will get one thing, and then we'll change, or they'll remove funding for it, and then the municipality has to pick up the tab. So in the initial report from Brown &amp; Brown, one of the conversations and one of the, the points that they shared is, if we were to consider to go to the state plan, we would need to have a good chunk of money available, should we need to exit that plan and come back to our own self-insured plan. Again, something worth considering, because there is, still could be benefits for the board, as well as employees, if that, in that kind of a change, there is potential benefits still. So in considering all of the complexities of that kind of a change, really the best way to do it would be through a committee, that includes all stakeholders, board membership, members from the town, the first selectman, and so one of the things that is presented tonight for the board's consideration is this, this committee, for the purpose of studying a comparison between our current plan and the state plan. And proposed members would include the following three Board of Ed members, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of finance, first selectman or designee, one town council member, the, the Board of Ed liaison. Given that we already have a town council member who comes to our meetings, that would be a very good fit, because then we would have continuity of dialogue. One Board of Finance member, and then each union president from each one of the associations, as well as the vice president from the Teachers Association, given that it's a large group. By having all those players together in one place, we could work through the various challenges, various pros and cons, hopefully come to a consensus about the best direction for all of us to go, ultimately ensuring that it's the best situation financially for employees, as well as the board. So that will be coming up under new business later on tonight. And that's what I have under the superintendent's report.
Anybody have questions for Jack?
It's just for the Board of Ed, it's, it would not affect the town employees.
Correct.
Correct, they're already on the state program.
They are already on the state program?
They are.
Yeah, they're already on the state program.
How do they like it?
Feedback has been good, the employees like it. I don't believe they were self-insured.
No, they were fully insured.
Right, so that's, that's a key difference.
They were, they were dealing with increases in the twenty percent plus range, going back, probably already by five years ago, so they were dealing with really, really large insurance increases, both employee and the town, in terms of what they had to contribute for insurance, so.
When they were, before they ran the state, you mean?
Mm-hmm. I don't know what their rate, what their increase, oh, actually, no, weren't we told they were in the three percent?
I don't recall.
I don't know, I'm, forget, forget I said that. I don't know what the increases on the state plan have been for them in the past. I think this is their second year on it, but I do know that before this, they were struggling with, you know, increases over twenty percent, so, you know, I don't know.
I wonder how they feel about their coverage, and if that, if there's any correlation with, you know, the Board of Ed's plan with them.
Again, these are the details we're going to have to work through. What are the differences in the plan, what are the cost benefits, what are the cost detractors? A number of school districts around us have made the leap, so there is a growing number going toward it. However, given the state's fiscal condition, there's uncertainty about its long-term viability, and that's, that's part of the challenge we'd have to figure out.
That's why we want to have a study to look at it and make an informed decision with everybody, you know, because if it, if we do go to, let's say, the state plan, you know, we would need some sort of agreement with the town, because if we needed to opt out of that, we would need to be putting money away to go back to a self-insured plan, so that's why we need to kind of study it and have other people involved in it, so that it's, everybody's in agreement with how this would work. That's why this is going to be a huge undertaking, and this is going to be probably months of work, it's not going to be very quick. You know, trying to work through all the pros and cons and issues that could come up and arise, and to me, the biggest one is the needing of self-insured money, if we have, if the state, if there's a problem with the state, and if it doesn't become viable.
Interesting thing is, even going back two years, people were wondering about the viability. Last two years, there've been good reports about the plan, so again, it's kind of hard to know, it's a question that we need to, we'll need to figure out.
All right, anybody else, before we move on to presentations? All right, Jack?
All right.
You're up.
So under presentations, Jack Chicalini and Joe Cobza are going to be presenting on Jacquey Hollow and Massey honor rolls. The, both schools have been undergoing a study, the, the honor roll criteria, in particular for Jacquey Hollow, is very dated, is that a fair statement?
It is.
And so what you'll be hearing from Jack tonight is a revised plan to bring it, to be more current. The work has been going on between the two buildings, so that one building is informing the other, we don't want to have criteria at Jacquey Hollow that's more rigorous than the high school, so they've been working together. The high school work is still in process, but again, it's been a collaborative endeavor, so Jack and Joe will give you some more details.
Thank you, and thank you for giving both of us the time to, to share this with you tonight. The work at Jacquey Hollow has gone on since, actually, almost for the, the past academic year, it was last fall, following the conclusion of the first quarter, that I brought a committee of teachers together, representing the three different grades and also different department areas, with what I thought was a specific task at the time. Our goal was, we wanted to make a revision to the criteria for the honor roll in order to allow it to be calculated electronically. Our data system power school, as you're all familiar with it, and grades and the children information, et cetera, also has the capacity to calculate honor roll. To date, we continue to do honor roll by hand. It's, it's an arduous task, it takes, once report cards are created, literally, someone goes through eight-hundred report cards, following the criteria, and one report card at a time determines honor roll. It, it, it's a huge amount of time, and, and it can be done in, I think, seconds.
To give Jack, I just calculated a basic honor roll for the fourth quarter today, so it took about a minute.
Because basic, and, and the difference is, yeah, Massey has a numeric value that goes along with its criteria, we do not, our criteria is still based on the letter grade. When we sat down as a committee and we looked at the, our criteria, and we kind of chuckled over the letter grade, that's when, as a group, we said, you know, the, our criteria is not even a great reflection of our current philosophy, and a reflection on what our kids do, in terms of coursework, study, et cetera, and if I can give you a quick example, well, this was our, this was our rationale, as I already mentioned, develop a key computerized means to calculate, but then as we looked at the current coursework at the middle school level, we realized how outdated our written criteria is, and so that led us to, we realized we needed to better align, we needed to revise what we had, to better align our criteria with the high school. So what we did, this is the criteria we currently have, and we, we looked at this, and what we realized is that the second statement in each of the, whether you're looking at high honors or honors, refers to essentially weighting grades, we have weighted grades for particular courses. That's older than my tenure at Jacquey Hollow. The rationale for that was, at the time that this was created, the criteria was created, in math, less than twenty percent, it's actually closer to ten percent of the children in, and honors geometry, honors algebra reflected really eighth graders at the time of the writing, less than ten percent, or about ten percent of the kids, might take one of those two courses. Less than fifty percent of the grade seven and eighth grade combined were studying world language. So it was atypical for kids to be taking these high school equivalent courses, so it was decided that to recognize the fact that these were challenging courses, they would wait it. Another thing that was happening at the time, our math curriculum, eighth grade curriculum pre-algebra was the eighth grade, the typical eighth grade course of study, it was the curriculum for math in eighth grade, pre-algebra's our seventh grade curriculum now. So we have changed our challenge, our sequence of study, we've, we've increased the challenge over the years, we haven't modified our honor roll criteria in order, in order to reflect that. So we began, we began the work of doing that, and at that point, so what we wanted to do is, we realized that we had other questions, we had, we had even more broad questions. Is middle school honor roll a typical entity in other districts? So we wanted to investigate that. If it is, how does the honor roll criteria reflect within other districts, reflect against their high school criteria? So we did that research as a committee, we went out, we researched the local, the schools in our local area, in our, we even did sampling schools throughout the country. What we learned was that middle school honor roll is very typical, it is throughout our area, throughout the DURG, and, and actually, the sampling that we did across the country, we found middle school honor rolls recognized. So we knew now we wanted to move forward then, and, and revise our criteria, so we did just that, we, we utilized some sample criteria that we saw, we actually, I spoke to Joe on more than one occasion, we, we used the Massey criteria as well, and some of the wording, we borrowed some wording as well, to better reflect what our kids are doing at this time. And then following that, and I'll show you the proposed statement in just a moment, but just to, so that you know when you see the statement, the other thing that we did was, once we created a proposed statement, a revised statement for the honor roll, we wanted to know what would the impact be in terms of that criteria for the typical student. By the time that we had done all of this work, et cetera, we were well into the third quarter, it was probably February or so that we've now completed all this work. So we took our quarter one and our quarter two report cards, and although we already had honor roll determined using our current criteria, we had power school set up with the revised criteria, because now we created a mathematic criteria, a, a numeric criteria, and we set it up, and we ran quarter one and quarter two again, so that we could compare. So we, we did that work beforehand, so we know, we already know the impact of, of what will happen. And then we brought that back to the greater staff, the, our committee sat, we met, we had two faculty meetings and a presentation faculty meeting, and then a follow-up with our staff, so that our staff could give feedback as well, based on the work we did and the findings. And so this is the proposed honor roll statement, criteria, if you will, that we've developed. The thing that I think is, is most different, as you read this, based on the courses that kids are taking, and the percentage of children that we have taken those courses, we think it's most appropriate to not wait any classes. We do, we have looked at how our students are doing in the classes that they are being recommended to, and those recommendations are very solid recommendations. If this recommendations are solid, and those are the appropriate courses for those children, why would we wait those courses? And now, when you look at, if we take math as, as an example, eighth graders all see a form of algebra, so to say that you're going to wait on algebra course doesn't, it doesn't have the same meaning that it had, again, ten years ago, when a very small percentage were taking those. World language, we have over eighty-five percent of our kids in seventh and eighth grade involving in world language, that's as compared to, again, ten years ago, we had less than fifty percent. Why would you wait something that you're saying all of these students are able to take part in? So that's really the most significant change. The other change that is significant, because it's different, but it's very much in keeping, are the actual numeric pieces. We're, we're using to qualify for high honors, a student must earn a ninety percent average or higher, with no grade lower than a B, simply stated, that's an A minus or better for high honors, and then without a grade lower than a B, and then you can see the honors, eighty-three percent, no grade lower than a C-plus. Big difference in this compared to what we had, because we were letter grade based, I'll say Jack Chicalini. In our current criteria, if I took six courses that are graded, I could have five As and a B, and, and not make high honors, as long as that B is, you know, of course, it is not weighted, but if they were all regular courses, not, I would not make high honors. I could, in this system, because it's an average, it's a ninety percent average, so now my average, although I had a B, might still allow me to be recognized for high honors. And then, obviously, the similar would be true for honors. So that's the work, from the work, this is the criteria.
So you took two marking periods, and you calculated the honor roll the old way and the new way? What did, what were the differences or the similarities?
I think I wrote this script, I was hoping somebody would. It's about a seven to ten percent difference, depending on the quarter or the grade. We, we get a, and sometimes it's not even that much. So my point is, it's relatively close, and it's usually an increase in number of children that are being able to be recognized, and, and it's obvious as to why. An average allows an opportunity for some students who might not have gotten in before to get in. There were a small number of occasions where one to two students had taken advantage of the weighted grade, and that boosted them up, and they wouldn't have made the higher level, but it is the rarity that that would have impacted them. Quite honestly, the students who are being placed in those courses are being placed well, and they're successful. They really, as I say, except for these one or two situations, they don't need, they don't need the extra boost. They really, a- a- as I say, except for these one or two situations, they don't need, they don't need the extra boost to be recognized for honors.
Mm-hmm.
They're going to make it from those courses.
Just to give you a little frame of reference, very, Jack's new policy very closely mirrors our our policy at MASC. Same philosophy, our uh our honor roll is calculated on an unweighted system. Um that's always been our, that's always been our thought. That recognition happens at the level that you are uh that you're at. So it doesn't matter whatever level you're placed into, you can achieve high honors or poor honors. Um if you look at it, it's really very similar. Ours is based, where Jack's is out of a ninety and an eighty-three. Ours, we do it out of the, you know, the four point oh GPA. So it's a three point seven or better with no grade lower than a B. If you look at a three point seven, it's an A minus. It's a ninety. Um and if you look at our honors, it's a three point oh or better with no grade lower than a C plus. Um so a three point oh is a B. Jack's was an eight, was an eighty-three, again with no grade lower than a C plus. Uh and that includes all courses at at MASC are included in honor roll, health, PE, electives, whatnot. Um you know, one of the nuances at MASC between MASC and Jackie Hall is we have a weighted GPA and we have an unweighted GPA. Um we use the unweighted GPA for honor roll, but kids will get a bump not for honor roll, but in their GPA if they're taking AP classes. Early college experience classes through UConn and whatnot. Um so very, very uh very similar uh themes between the the two honor rolls. There has been some discussion amongst the staff at analyzing our honor roll. Um we've done, they've done a little bit of preliminary work and I know we've talked a little bit about uh if they wanna move forward possibly um. You know, forming some sort of study group or something to look at, which would include um perhaps someone like someone in this group. Um maybe some teachers, obviously some teachers, administrators, parents, and maybe some students. Um because the stakes are a little higher at times at the high school, um for kids that are participating in uh after school sports and whatnot. Um if you make high honors, um you're selected to your conferences, all academic team. There is a all, you know, all state academics if you are, if you achieve high honors um in season and things like that. So you know, before we we rush too fast into anything, we'll definitely get some people. But that's where we stand now and I think it aligns really closely to what uh Jack's doing over at Jackie Hall.
Hi honors at Jackie Hall was ninety-three and above, at MASC it's ninety and above?
It's a it's a uh ninety and above at at Jackie Hall.
Ninety percent and above would be high honors.
Okay.
Ninety and above and eighty-three. So if you look at at ours.
Okay.
That ninety is an A minus to three seven and the eighty-three to B, three point oh. So very, very closely aligned. And to Jack's point, now all he'll have to do is go in power school, get a system, calculate honor roll, and it does it.
It's and and eliminates risk of error. It it really is. It's it's a it's a good thing to do. And quite honestly, the revision was important too. And I take responsibility for it. This was, that criteria was long overdue for revision. And it was great that that was the group of uh you know, teachers that came together quickly said, you know, Jack, we've got a bigger task here than just, and they were right.
Any other questions?
We'd like to put this in place. I don't know, I don't wanna upset my bounds.
This is more information, it's not a board policy, uh but we want to make you aware and uh and if there are any concerns we'd like to know and get your feedback. And if we're comfortable with that, then we're ready to move ahead and replace for next year.
Makes sense.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think we're all in favor, even though we don't need an official vote, I think we're all in favor.
Well, thank you. So at this point, uh rather than shifting again, we're gonna look at healthy food certification. So Joe and I are gonna do this. It'll just take a minute to shift.
And Alan, if you wanna come on up, we have Alan Dean here from Sedexo also.
Hi.
And where this conversation started is every year in June, we need to submit to the state for healthy food certification. We need to opt in or opt out. If you remember, uh a few months ago, the Board of Ed voted to be healthy food certification, to use that certification K through eight. But we got an email from the state saying, you can't do that. Now, in the past, we were certified K through eight. They won't allow that anymore. We have to be in K twelve or out K twelve. We don't get a choice anywhere in between. So Joe did a lot of work on this. We had conversations with Alan Dean about this and we wanted to give you some background information. And also some options to help guide some possible paths moving forward.
Yeah, so when we got notified, I started looking into it. I'm like, wow, this is as clear as mud to me right now. But I think we've kind of synthesized it down to a pretty reasonable chunk to be able to look at and and understand. Because I couldn't, I couldn't get myself wrapped around all the acronyms, NSLP, CNS, HFC, you know, which is which and whatnot. So very, very simply, NSLP is a national school lunch program. Those are the federal standards. So when we look at the national school lunch program, it's the federal standards for foods provided uh in school lunches. We can have schools be in the national school lunch program. We can have schools be out. We can, we can make that decision. We can have, the high school can be out of the na- national school lunch program. The other schools can stay in the national school lunch program. It doesn't need to be a K twelve decision. You can do it school by school. Um so NSLP is federal. HFC, the healthy foods uh certification, is a state guideline. Uh and it pertains to all foods so separately outside of the national school lunch program, like MASC was last year. Um the healthy food certification follows, again, another acronym, the CNS, which is the Connecticut Nutrition Standards. Um interestingly, the Connecticut Nutrition Standards are a lot tighter than the federal standards, a lot tighter than the uh NSLP standards. Um what you have to, what you have to do for the healthy food certification is all schools have to be in it in your district. All foods, K twelve, I'm sorry, all schools, K twelve have to be in the uh in the HFC. In order to be able to get the reimbursement back from the state, which is about ten percent, ten cents per reimbursable lunch. Um so to just to give you, so NSLP, federal, HFC, state. NSLP, you have flexibility, HFC, no flexibility. So to give you a little bit of a chronology of of, you know, what what's going on and why we got a call from the state the other day. If you look back, we were kind of ballparking. I think it was sometime around two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there was some concerns about um portion sizes. Uh and food, available foods, especially at uh at MASC, based on the new federal guidelines, I think. Um there's some new federal guidelines that came out and, you know, it was, it was definitely problematic. I saw it at MASC. Because the kids had to take, you know, a fruit and they had to take a vegetable and they were walking out and taking the fruit and promptly throwing it in the garbage can. And, you know, they weren't really happy with, you know, their choices that they had. So that prompted some conversation about approximately a year later. Um twenty fifteen, sixteen, in April, Alan and Donna Lopiano came to this uh group. And talked about taking MASC off of the the national school lunch program, the federal program. Um at that, uh the uh you folks or the the board at that time uh voted to take MASC off the NSLP, off of the national school lunch program. Um but we, if you looked, uh the next meet, or not the next meeting, but at the June meeting. There was a motion to approve the healthy food certification. And actually, I went back and I looked at the motion. And it actually says, motion to approve healthy food certification, and that's it. It doesn't say necessarily say K twelve, but the assumption is that we were thinking K twelve. Some of the feedback we got from the state is that if you're off the national school lunch program, it's almost impossible to follow. It's almost impossible to follow the healthy food certifications, because remember what I said, the Connecticut Nutrition Standards are more stringent than even the NSLP ones. And it gets into a lot more complexity with uh à la carte items and things like that. So so in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we came off the school lunch program at MASC. And said we were gonna stay on the healthy food cer- food certification, K twelve. June sixteen, seventeen, board meeting, we uh made a motion and that motion was very specific. That we were gonna keep MASC off the national school lunch program, but stay on the the HFC, the state plan for K to eight. We did the exact same thing this year. Uh in April, we said we're gonna uh, we we made a motion to um keep MASC off the national school lunch program. Actually, we didn't make that motion. We, all we had a motion for was uh about the healthy food certification. And once again, in April of seventeen, we said that MASC uh was, I'm sorry, that we were gonna certify, do the healthy food certification, K eight. Um we got an email from Susan Fiore at the State Department of Education who says, you can't do that. Because remember, if you go back before, the state one, the national one, you can be, you can pick and choose the schools. But the state one has to be a K twelve dis- uh decision, okay? Um so, you know, basically, she she talked to us and said we were out of compliance with that. So we have to make a decision tonight. Go ahead, Sheila.
Na- national is you can pick and choose the schools. State is you.
Yeah.
It's all or none?
It's all or none.
Go big or go home for something. But for national, it's.
So for national, for for national, so I hope I cleared that up a little bit. It was as clear as mud to me when I first started, but basically, exactly. National, you can pick and choose. State, it's gotta be K twelve. And our motion put us out of compliance by saying, oh, we're only gonna do the state plan, K to eight.
So here's a couple of options that we put together for you and that we we think will help to clarify a path moving forward. So the first option, in the light blue there, is uh opt in for both the national school lunch program and the healthy food certification. If we do that, we gain the reimbursement, federal and state. It doesn't go to us, it goes to Sedexo. However, uh no?
No, it's you.
It does go to us. Okay, thank you. Um then, the high school would need to go back to the NSLP. And follow all the portion sizes and food types and requirements related to that. We had a lot of unhappy families when that was going on in terms of kids getting enough food. And uh being able to access types that they would eat. At the high school level, it's unlike, I spent ten years of my life as an elementary principal. As an elementary principal, you can say to a kid, you really need to eat that, and they'll eat it. The high school, not so much.
Also, also with the um with that plan that we that we voted out of. It it was the portion sizes and the types of food they had to eat. And even, it was very strict about like the ingredients they could cook with and I don't wanna say it didn't.
Right. To Joe's point, just to give you a little more detail on why the state was saying to us, I don't think you could fulfill HFC by itself. And not have S uh NSLP is because in the national school lunch program, they look at the lunch in aggregate. All of the items together, what's, what are the calories and and they don't look at things individually. With HS, HFC, they look at every individual item. So what Joe was saying about à la carte, on the national school lunch program. You could have a second um entree à la carte, correct, Alan?
That's right.
That's possible to do. Eight, and for our kids uh who, you know, a lot of kids who are active, that's a really important thing. And in HFC alone, you you can't do that. It won't, you can't meet the requirements by providing two à la carts. It would be a violation of their standards. So that's where some of this gets complex. So the second option, quite honestly, is is the more viable one uh for your consideration here. So the option two is opt out of HFC, K twelve. However, remain in the national school lunch program, K through eight. So what happens is we lose the per meal reimbursement from Connecticut, but there's no cost to the BOE for that. That gets absorbed by Sedexo. We gain flexibility in the uh portions and food types in grades nine through twelve. However, we'll follow the national school lunch program standards, K through eight. It's really not dissimilar to what we're currently doing. But it allows us that flexibility K through, uh in grades nine through twelve, which has been really important in uh meeting the needs of our families.
Jack, can I ask a question?
Why do we wanna be in the NSLP?
Because we get reimbursed.
You get reimbursements.
And we can't afford to take everybody out.
Okay.
Because the state reimburses us money that goes, so we we need that as part of our budget. We could not afford to go.
Out of both, you mean?
With full out with the 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 state, and not, not the state, I'm sorry, the federal government because of the reimbursement money we get.
From the federal government?
From the federal government. Like when we opted out of the the high school one, it was a forty thousand dollar hit. That's how much reimbursement we lost just for high school.
Wow.
However, they sold more food.
However, on the upside, how much is it? Like eighty, ninety thousand dollars in additional revenue for taking the the high school off, correct, Alan?
It's worse.
Right, it's worse.
It's more than cover the whole that.
Correct.
That was left by going off program.
Correct. It would make sense for the younger kids.
The other piece too is the NSLP allows Sedexo to get foods at a much lower rate, correct?
Correct. Commodity, commodity, government commodity foods, which, you know, we order fresh fruits and vegetables and we order whole meats and things like that. We don't order the canned and the syrups and all that. What I prefer, you know, is junk, really. We will wanna order good foods and we get it at uh, you know, to the fraction of a penny on the dollar. So uh it allows us to to keep cost control and still utilize some of the fresh stuff that's out there.
So it makes sense to say in the federal plan?
It makes sense at the at the lower levels. I mean, you can make an argument either way. Uh but last year, you know, about fifteen percent of all the meals sold, K through eight. Were either from a child who qualified for a free lunch or a reduced lunch. So it was fairly significant. It was about nine percent at the high school when we decided to take that program off. Um but it's a bit, greater percentage of your children at the lower levels uh do qualify for free and reduced lunch. So it's a, it's a reimbursement hardship and then it's, you know, it's a lot of kids. And so how do we, how do you work that with the families of the community who depend upon, you know, that that service?
At the high school level, sedec, uh true or false, Sedexo absorbed the loss for the lack of reimbursement. But wound up selling almost twice as much or a significant amount more.
So the way it works with Sedexo and the contract, we have the Board of Education, we have a five thousand dollar surplus. We're saying to this board that we will deliver, uh in the program, a five thousand dollar surplus. If we don't, any shortfall of that, we will backfill or pay back to the Board of Education. The gap between where the actual program ended and where that five thousand dollar surplus lies. So last year, for example, the program lost thirty-two thousand dollars across the district, which was significantly better than pre-high school on NSLP. Uh so it, the the model has worked very well at the high school. But for the example of this year, we have a a variance of thirty-seven thousand dollars between the guarantee in our contract and the actual performance of the program. So we will write a check to the Board of Ed for thirty-seven thousand dollars and absorb that cost. So uh it really is, it never has been any exposure financially for this board, not for the school service program. Uh but I think with this program at the high school, the kids are far happier and are far less hungry. And we all know that less hungry kids typically perform better, listen better, uh better athletes, etc. So I think it works all the way around.
Could could that work in the lower levels, though?
It could. There are districts uh that are off program, what we call off program, uh district, well, I live in one and I live in Madison. And uh our competitor runs that program, took us off three years ago at all levels. Um but we didn't have in Madison uh the number of free and reduced children that were participating in the program. So, you know, just at Jackie Hall alone, and I don't have my glasses on, it's way over here.
One point five.
I broke down a year ago, I got it. Uh anyway, just that, if if we're just looking at the Jackie Hall numbers, last year. Almost eight thousand meals served were to free and reduce kids. That's a lot, that's a lot of lunches. That's a lot of kids depending on the program. So.
You don't think better food and more of it and selling more of it could make up the difference?
I think from a revenue standpoint, there, I think there's two, there's two storylines here. The revenue standpoint, yes, I think we can make it up. I think whatever the deficit is with the loss of commodities and the loss of federal reimbursements, that could be made up. It's what would this board wanna do with the the number of kids who could no longer get a free lunch, because everyone get a free lunch. If you're off program, there is no free lunch, there is no reduced lunch, they have to pay for it. And that's the other storyline. So you gotta kinda weigh what, you know, is the right thing to do.
I see. I thought, I thought the MASC kids were still able to get the free lunch for the people who previously qualified.
I think for the first year, and I'll have to go back and look, there was a discussion around the board subsidizing some of the the free and reduced. We tracked the, we don't, we haven't tracked the meals now in a couple of years. So there are no children, I don't believe, getting free meals at MASC unless you know differently.
Nothing at all.
I can, I can verify that for you, but I don't think that's the case.
I know the price point, I know part of the um internal plans, the price point came up a little bit on some deals, but then they still offer lower price point.
Right. We have a a base meal at the high school uh that would keep the price down uh just to make sure that we could, make it affordable to as many kids as we could. And then you had the option for those, the more expensive meals with a greater portion size and different ingredients, etc. So um I think the free reduced population in the world is around eight or nine percent of the total kids. And about fourteen percent of the total meals sold were to those children in the program, at the lower levels. So.
I, yeah, that's, I I thought back then when we, when we voted off of the high school, that the kids who qualified for the free lunch were still, free or reduced lunch. Were still going to get it and that cost was gonna be absorbed because the profit of selling so much more food.
Well, there was, and I have to go back to the contract clause, there was for, you know, we were tracking the free, we were tracking the reduced uh meals that were served for that year. And were the board was going to subsidize whatever that amount was, I think we had projected thirty-six thousand dollars to subsidize our kids for that first year. Um I don't know what the final number was for that first year, but I know, I believe, and I'll, again, I'll verify this for you. I think we've gotten away from serving. I think we've gotten away from serving free and reduced meals to kids at the high school.
And Shannon, that's something we can certainly investigate and give more details back to the board at the next meeting.
And I, I actually thought SEDEXO was absorbing it and, and yet, at the end of the day, more profitable, even with that absorption.
We did absorb it. Uh, I, I never, I never, uh, submitted an invoice to the board for those meals, I just chose to absorb that cost.
So SEDEXO absorbed it, not the board?
That's correct. Yeah, I just, it was the right thing to, you know, partner them together.
It was, um, it, yeah.
Yeah. No, there's never been, uh, financial exposure to the board on, on that decision.
Right. And it wound up actually, like, it was the right thing to do and it was a good thing to do and, and it was more profitable as, as well, I think, right?
High school is profitable. It's absolutely profitable, was not, and it is. The, the high school had almost a forty thousand dollar deficit previous to this and now it's profitable. So more kids are eating and they're eating, quite honestly, better food. You know, the Healthy Food Certification Program sounds great, but the fact of the matter is it really covers just processed, for the lack of a better word, junk?
I agree, I agree. I think there's a perception that it's healthy, but it's not.
It really isn't.
It's not. So, so could that same formula work if, if, if what I believed to be true, that, that SEDEXO was absorbing. The cost of the free and reduced lunch and yet still profitable because so much more food was served that tasted better. And, you know, healthier too, perhaps, could that same formula apply K through eight?
Potentially. And, and I think my recommendation would be, uh, because I can't get the answers, but we do have districts in the state of Connecticut that, that do that. And to, to talk to those folks and try and understand if in fact it's made good sense.
We do, we do have some neighboring districts that have done it, Newtown has done it. There are, in total of the state of Connecticut, they're a small percentage of the state. There, I'd say, um, probably under ten percent.
Less than, I'd say it's probably a dozen school districts out of a hundred and sixty-eight or so, so maybe one or two percent.
So if you want, I mean, one of the things we could do is definitely investigate this more and bring more information back. I mean, Newtown is one of the districts, so, I mean, we could even have them come in and share with us too about what they found.
Newtown might be similar demographics, it might, um, might actually, some towns might not be a good comparison for us. But Newtown might be a good comparison for us.
It's all gonna depend on what the percentage of their free and reduced lunch is.
Exactly, exactly.
If it's, you know, a hundred thousand dollar hit, that just is not gonna be able to happen.
The one other thing that we're up against is we do have to make a decision tonight because we got an extension from the state to submit our decision by the eighteenth. Because it was due on the first of this month. So, um, we need to tell them one way or the other with, with HFC where we're going to go for next year.
So, two discussions, one, to continue it, to not, to, to not certify HFC. Which would allow the high school to stay in its current state off-program, um, or to certify HFC and then we have to take a look at the high school program. Probably putting it back on the NSLP and that will subject, uh, the menu work back to the federal level, I suppose, to what the kids are getting on.
I just think option three could be possibly, not enough information, option three of going off altogether, K through eight.
Right, but that's, that's.
Or K through twelve.
But that's not something we can do tonight, that's gonna have to be looked at very closely.
So if we give them a decision today, it, it's, it's a final decision for the school year?
The decision we're giving tonight is for the Healthy Food Certification, just for the state, because they need to know a re, in or out. So the NSLP actually probably has some flexibility, I'm not sure what the flexibility is that we might have.
Right, there, you can continue the discussion on NSLP pass tonight, uh, but with respect to the HFC, that decision has to be made to either, to not certify. And continue the high school or to certify and take the high school back onto the NSLP.
The decision you need tonight is to continue the high school as is, as is, or take, or put them?
Say off the HFC.
Correct, we need to decide for the state of Connecticut whether we're off altogether or we're on altogether. If we're on altogether with the state, then the high school has to go back to the old way.
So that, so we need more information going forward, but for tonight, we have enough information, I think, to give the answer that you need for tonight, yeah, okay.
That we have to make tonight, it's all off, all on. And if it's all off, then we're going backwards to the old high school plan.
And, uh, Joe just dug up the minutes, uh, going back to.
April sixteen.
April, April sixteen, so this is, uh, what was stated in that meeting. Mr. Dean said that there will be a base meal that will include two sides and milk at a recommended price of three dollars and thirty-five cents. This would be the option for students qualifying for free and reduced lunch.
And I think we've kept to that price point.
We have.
I think we have.
Yeah.
So, um, HFC, do we need any more information on that or we're, okay, now part the NSLP. Would we like, uh, more information moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let's figure it all out and then we can make an informed decision on that for K to eight. The biggest thing is what we do with the state, we have to do that tonight. And that doesn't affect anything. If we say we're off, then it doesn't matter, we can do whatever we want. But if, we will still have the problem, if we kept everybody on HFC, we cannot take now everybody off. This, the national program, because the national program is, 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 is not as tight as the Connecticut program. The Connecticut program is more stringent to us.
I could see what, why it was clear as mud when you sat down with this Joe. It's crystal clear why it was so muddy.
Well, again, it's Connecticut putting up obstacles.
Of course.
You know, why you can't do per school like the federal government does, it's ridiculous. And they've allowed us to do per schools last year, so, but now they've changed their decision.
They have a lot of time and, and resources out there here, it's apparently to focus all of that on, onto this, yeah.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this will come back under new business?
Yes, this will come back under new business.
Thank you.
Thank you, no, just thank you very much.
We'll save those for when it comes back up again.
Alrighty, alright, then we will move on to old business, so, uh, which is the Healthy Food Certification. So I would need a motion to opt all of our schools K to twelve out of the Healthy Food Certification Program. Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Jeff. Further discussion on this?
And so that's option two?
That's option two.
Okay, that's, that's what we did last year.
No, last year, K, they, the state accepted K to eight on the healthy program. And nine to twelve not on the program, they will not accept that. They told us we're not in compliance, it's either K to twelve is on, K to twelve, all or nothing. We do not want that. Anybody else? Alright, all in favor of taking every, we're us off the Healthy Food Certification from the state, alright? And we are still gonna follow it for K to eight. So just because we're not certified by the state, we're still following the Healthy Food Guidelines for our K to eight kids. So nothing will actually change here.
Right, I mean, it really means K-12 will be the same next year.
Right.
We're just abiding by the state's mandate.
Right, correct.
We stay on the federal.
For K to eight at this point until more information is had for that. And they'll give back to us on that.
Yep, we'll put that together for the August meeting.
I think it was the nutrition committee, you know, were just different, I wanna, it, it wasn't that healthy. All the requirements to qualify for the healthy food, it wasn't actually healthy.
Right, it's all about processed food.
It's right, it's the opposite.
Right, correct.
It was the opposite of healthy, yeah.
He, he said, the SEDEXO said that he was, they're absorbing in the cost of whatever they're missing out on. I mean, does that mean next year they may not absorb the cost?
No, it's part of their contract.
Right, right, so they're gonna absorb the cost of the ten cents per kid that we're losing for the state program on, on this. But as far as the, the students know in the district is, it's the same exact thing that we had last year, nothing changes. So that, so we're still following all the guidelines, it's just that we're not certified by the state.
And since they absorbed the cost for that, lack of reimbursement in high school and were able to produce a better product that sold more. And it turned out to be profitable for them, that's.
I, I get your point, that's why, I just consider that we, you know, they changed the year-to-year, we're back at the same position.
Yeah, they can't.
Good.
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, we want.
Is Alan still here?
He just popped up.
Oh, good. Yeah, what, yeah, that would be good.
I have a cool, one other question. I heard discussions are.
So the, the questions were about cost.
Yep.
And, uh, if you wanna walk us through that, I mean, maybe going back two years, the deficit was, what at that point?
Deficit was a hundred and thirty-two thousand in the program, district-wide this year, or I'm sorry, a hundred and fourteen thousand and this year the deficit was thirty-two thousand. The goal is, I mean, the program for the board has always been no cost because we've always backfilled whatever that deficit is. But ideally, we'd like to be able to get the program in a surplus by itself, so we can take that money and invest it back into capital and. And improvements in the program and then you don't have to touch the general fund and capital projects to do that. And you can use those dollars to educate the kids and we can let the lunch program self-sustain itself and invest in itself. And that's kinda the goal, and that's, I think we're heading in that direction.
Alan, the, uh, just be, the capital projects are kitchen improvements, what, what exactly?
You know, if, if an oven breaks, um, you know, you have some steamers, we have some, I mean, some of this kitchen equipment is old. And some of it, the replacement cost is thirty thousand dollars and some of it's important to, to integrity of the program. So if we can get this program to a place where it can make its own money, uh, then we can take that money, reinvest it and not have to look at other sources from this board to do that. And that's really the goal ultimately, is to get to that place.
Do you think you could do that under the option two?
I think.
In your opinion, do you think, what Shannon brought up?
No, I think we can get to that, I think we can get to that place and I, I can only give you the experience that I have and that's in the town where I live. And I know that in Madison, uh, the, the deficit in that program was north of two hundred thousand dollars and then they took the program off. And I don't know the number and you can verify with Art Sickel and some of your, your colleagues over in town. It was profitable program. Now, I don't know what the number is, but I know it's profitable. Uh, and I know there's a lot of satisfaction and I know I spent an awful lot of money at school lunch, more than I ever wanted to, especially for a competitor. But, uh, but the kids like it, the kids do like it.
Yep.
At all levels, the kids like it. I mean, I think the greatest impacts are always at the higher levels, so the, the, the jockeys and the MASCIC would probably see the greatest. Um, uh, changes, but even at the elementary school, uh, you know, it's more parent-driven decision. And so, uh, you know, it's engaging more with the parents and the, and the students and really trying to understand what would it take for you to participate in a program? Because right now the participation is about forty-one or forty-two percent. So how do we get half of you or, or sixty percent of you to participate in this program and feel good about it? And, cause if you can do that, then you can, you can really have a win-win, both financially and satisfaction.
And, yeah.
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 And if the kids in the high school, I mean.
Kids that were.
That was a huge complaint a couple of years back, yeah, the last few years we all do.
So we'll, we'll work on putting a study together so we can get more information to the board about K eight, NSLP.
Right, and I know the, the middle school kids, as Gabby and I know, who I forwarded my child's text messages to me, to her. Of, you know, for three years of complaints, she's so happy to be going to MASCIC because the food has been awful at the middle school. She complains, you know.
And it speaks well to SEDEXO too, that, that the program, once you came off of that, we're able to.
Once you have some latitude, you can do a lot of things.
Right.
You know, but you just don't have a lot of tech, latitude in NSLP.
Right.
So that's, that's the challenge.
So, again, I don't think the middle school is thrilled with this, the National School Lunch Program either.
Or the mid, or the elementary school.
Alan, uh, what's timeline, how long does it take to gear up for a change like this?
I don't think, uh, you know, from an operational standpoint, you know, there's some menu work to be done. Uh, I'd need to talk with the state to understand, uh, you know, what type of notification, if any, that they need. If it's a beginning of the school year change, is it a mid-school year change, that, those are some of the things I'd have to understand. But to be able to do it operationally, you know, it's a couple of months. You know, we have a great, uh, you have a great food service director here in Rossio, he's a, he's a chef by, by nature. I have four, four dieticians now working in the state who work with the menus and, uh, and have worked here in MASCIC trying to get, find the right things. Uh, so, you know, we're, you know, we've had a lot of good experience here and I wonder about, and understand how to do it.
So one of the considerations is whether or not we wanna make a change during the school year. Or study this during the upcoming school year for the following year. Alright, but we'll come back with information next month so we can, you'll have all the information to make an informed decision.
Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Alright, so we did not vote, right Diane?
No.
Okay, great. Just wanna make sure so that we don't move on without the vote. So all in favor of taking, of, of taking us off the state Healthy Foods Program? All in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Just wanna make sure we voted.
Thank you, Ellen.
Cause we would go and not vote and that'd be in the place. Alright, we will move on to new business, first up is the CAPE Caps Conference, which is in November, you have the dates?
Yeah, just to make the board aware, that's Friday, the sixteenth of November and it is, uh, in Mystic. And, uh, in the past, uh, the superintendent and assistant superintendent have gone. We've typically had, I think last year we had two board members there.
Myself and Jerry.
Jerry, right?
Yep.
And there's some good sessions there, so, uh, hopefully we'd get a number of board members, uh, interested in going this year and if you consider it, uh, I think you'd find it enjoyable.
Yeah, and we just go to the Friday. There is a Saturday session, we did not go to the Saturday session.
Like historically, just Friday, right?
Just Friday, we just go on Friday and, um, last year, I will say, we even opted to bail out on the dinner on Friday night and left, but.
Oh, really? What date, do you know the date of that?
November sixteenth.
Yeah, it's actually a great program, they, you know, they do have great work, um, breakout workshops to go to, you can try and choose. And, um, I went to one and, oh my gosh, I realized that how dysfunctional are the boards. Of ED are in the state of Connecticut and I kept saying, oh, thankfully we are not like that. Because they were relating their experiences and their fights, um, and fist fighting at meetings. And there is some wild stuff that goes on and I was just like, wow, this does not happen here.
That would be a nightmare.
We are very lucky.
We're very lucky, it, it's kind of eye-opening to go and hear other people talk and hear things that going on in the breakout sessions. And you realize how, you know, um, lucky you are.
Yeah.
You know, here. Yeah, yeah, cause I'm also on this CAPE, um, you know, chairman, what do you call it?
Distribution.
Email group and some of the stuff that comes through there are kind of wilds because people ask for opinions on what other districts, other boards of EDs do. And it gets kind of vicious too and it's like, oh my gosh. And I just don't even, sometimes I don't even, I don't even offer what we do, cause I'm like, I'm just not even gonna go there. So, it's crazy. Alright, we will move on to the approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twelve, um, school calendar with contingency plan. And if everybody can look at the handout that's on your place, because there was an error on the one that was in the board pack. So this is the correct one, there had been one extra day, it was a hundred and eighty-three days in the one in the pack, so this is the correct one. Um, so first, do I have a motion to approve it as presented and then we can get into discussion? Thank you, Shannon, do I have a second? Thank you, David. Jack, take it away as to some of the changes.
So I'm gonna, uh, walk you through a few key pieces. So, one of the things that was added in this one is, um, an attempted pride, provide some more clarity to families about what happens. What happens when we have six snow days? How do I know where six lands? And with the older policy, there were a lot of if, thens, and you had to read through some text to figure out where things would land. This, what this attempts to do is make it pretty easy with the super text. If you look at, um, June fifteenth, there's a little number one there. That means if we have one day off due to weather, that's the first day that would be used for makeup. Then you'll notice on the sixteenth, there's a little number two and so on through that week. And it progresses all the way up to June twenty-sixth where you see a little number ten there. And then after that tenth makeup day, then we go into April vacation. Now, the intent is to try and use as many days as we can in June, not all of them, because of the crazy scenario we had this year with May. You know, I've, I've been doing this over thirty years, I've never seen that in my whole career. So we need to keep some in the bank because the state will not give any exemptions and we don't wanna have the horror story that Danbury had. Where their per diem to run school in the city of Danbury is six hundred thousand dollars, it, it's a very big district. So they need to, needed to take, Gabby would not like this at all, they needed to take six hundred thousand dollars from this fiscal year. And move it to next fiscal year because they couldn't fit in all. and move it to next fiscal year, because they couldn't fit in all of the days this year. They had to put one into next year, because they had nowhere else to go. So it seeks to provide clarity to families about what's gonna happen. It seeks to prevent us going from, into April vacation until we really, really have to. And then at the same time, it keeps a little bit of time in late June, should we get a storm very late in the game. It tries to accommodate all those things, because the weather's gotten so crazy, we just don't know where we're gonna be. Now, on the backside, the second page of this handout, you'll see a historical for you of the last eight years. In the last eight years, if you go all the way back to twenty-ten, eleven, that's the only year we got beyond ten. In that year, we had eleven. That year, we still had the February break. Four days during the mid-winter recess, um, uh, were taken away at that point. We don't have that break anymore. So, um, if we went into eleven, it would mean the loss of one day in April vacation. All things considered, eleven days is a lot of days. I don't think people would be, you know, completely shocked that that's something we would have to resort to in that kind of a situation. So that's, that's an overview of, of what we have.
Do we have questions on that?
Sorry. Oh, thank you, thank you. Thanks, Joe. So one other change in here is, again, to maximize this as much as possible. The day before Thanksgiving is a half day in this calendar, whereas historically, we've been a day off. We are unique. Other districts don't do that. What that one day gives us is, you'll notice, June aligns very nicely and neatly. Where the last day of school for students is a Friday, the last day of the makeups is a Friday. If we didn't have that, if the day, if the day before Thanksgiving was a day off, all of that would shift to a Monday.
That's fine.
Anybody have questions on this? Shannon, did you have?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Alright, hearing none, all in favor of approving the two thousand nineteen, twenty school calendar with the contingency plan as presented? Great, thank you, motion passes. Technology certified position.
Yeah, just to update the board of Ed, and this ties into the, the enrollment figures that we were providing earlier. One of the ways that we were able to get three positions is two positions were reassigned from existing staff. The third was taken from the technology, certified technology teachers. So that position, we're holding off on. If you recall, we had the three parapositions, uh, two years ago. That was transformed into one certified teacher that we wanted to implement this coming year. We're gonna hold off. Uh, the maintaining class size at a, at a good place is more important right now than keeping that position for technology at this point. We would like to have it moving forward, but by doing this, we can maintain class sizes and not have any impact on budget. So just wanted to make that clear with the board.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, we will move on to item D, which is a formation of the insurance study committee. Do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Christine, second. Shannon, alright. Um, Jack, do you want to go over again who, um, will be on this committee?
So the committee would be comprised of three board of Ed members, the superintendent of schools, the assistant superintendent of schools, the director of finance, the first selectman or designee, one town council member, which will be the board of Ed liaison from town council, one board of finance member, each union president from each of the associations in the Monroe Public Schools, and the vice president from the Teachers Association.
Correct. Anybody have discussion on that? Um, Jerry has already volunteered to be on it from the email you sent out. I will be on it unless somebody is really hasn't, we would need one more person. Unless two people are so overwhelmingly want to be on it, then I'll step off and let two people go on. It doesn't matter to me.
What does the meeting schedule look like?
To be determined. As, as Donna had said, this is going to be a heavy lift. Uh, I think we would be looking at something probably in the order of monthly, if we're lucky, maybe every other month. But there's gonna be a lot of information we're gonna need to work, work through. So I think realistically, probably monthly.
Yeah, this is gonna take a good portion of the year, um, to do. It's not as simple, just let's get together two meetings and we're, we're done. You're, you're looking, I would say, you're looking at where we would be coming, we wouldn't even have this known by the time we're voting on the budget. Like, if we were making this change for next year, you're looking at a March, April to kind of, when you think?
I, I would think so.
Yeah, before a decision is made, so like.
Unless we're really lucky.
Right, correct. Yeah, so you're, you're talking, it's gonna be like a, like a, like an ad hoc type of thing, or like a, when we did the field type of thing? It, it's gonna be a long process. So I would say at least six to eight months. I'm studying.
I would, I, unless somebody else wants to, I, I'm gonna regret this probably, but I would like, I would like to. Unless somebody else wants to.
Everybody's looking around.
I know, what am I thinking?
Go for it, Shannon.
So you asked that, Shannon?
There you go.
I, I just think it's, it's, I think it's always good and healthy to look at options. Um, and it's probably worth the time, considering the, uh, you know, the, the subject matter and the financial impact. So, I would have to look at my calendar before I raise my hand, but I think it's a good idea to look at stuff like this. This is huge, it's a huge issue.
Alright, so we'll just do it like this, um, and so if you, if people want to be on it, let us know. I know Jerry is a definite, like I said.
Shannon, we could vote to just have two board members on the committee.
So, like I said, if two people really want to overwhelmingly do it, I'll step back, but it's, it's probably gonna be Jerry, myself, and somebody else. So if you can do it, let us know.
Okay.
Alright, um, any other questions on that? Alright, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Um, ratification of the nurses' contract. So, I'm, we'll do the motion first, and we'll talk about all the, all the details of the contract. So do I have a motion to ratify the nurses' contract as presented? Thank you, Christine, second. Thanks, David. Take it away.
So this is one of the smallest associations in the district. I think it's all of six members, I believe. And negotiations are, were pretty simple. The, this is the last group in all of our associations where the, um, post-retirement benefits are now sunsetted, so that's official. It's, all associations have that, that benefit sunsetted. So that, that was, uh, that was a big shift. The salary and insurance are in line with all the other negotiations we've had, all the previous groups.
And Alan sat on that, and he is not here, but there's, uh, I think a little letter, if everybody saw it, and the.
And his statement is in line with what I just shared.
Right, in there, because he served on that. So, everybody is all in alignment with insurance, with salaries, and every, all the post retirement benefits are gone now from all the contracts, so, which is great. Alright, any questions?
Sounds like a good thing.
Yeah.
Yep, nope, it's a good thing.
Um, raises and everything is within budget? We're okay with all of that?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else? We did receive two thank you cards from, um, two retired teachers, Lynn Costello, um, and Mia Curso?
Cueva.
Cueva, sorry, thank you. Couldn't read how it, um, thanking us for the reception that we had before our board meeting at the beginning of June, and also their place, so. Both of them sent, um, some thank you notes along to us. Anybody else?
The, um, the retirement celebration too, at, um.
Oh, Waterford, are you?
Yeah, was great, was great. Yeah, second time there, and it was really, really good.
We had, there were teachers there from Shelton, and one of the comments they made to Becky Casisco is they were impressed with how warm the reception was. That people genuinely liked being around each other.
Yeah.
You're in charge of that now, Joe.
And, and he knows the buffet line needs to have two lines.
The buffet line needs to be two separate, yeah.
We met last week.
Yeah, so that got a little crazy. That was longer than the bar line. But it was a great reception. And the other thing was you, bigger, they may need to open up bigger space.
We had talked about that too, yeah.
Because it was packed, it was great.
Very well attended, yeah, it was awesome.
It was very well attended. It was a great evening.
It was, yeah, I enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was a great job.
And the hymen chords made, made the night too, that was awesome.
Yep.
We add something, don't we?
And that has to continue too, Joe, hymen chords.
As long as I'm not a part of it. Actually, I can do something with the band.
Do you? You can make it happen? Okay, good. They always do a great job. Alright, anything else? And graduation was lovely, both evenings. Yes, as, as John said to me, Joe is fair weather Joe, who's never had a weather-related issue on graduation.
Batted a thousand on that.
I know, I know.
But both evenings were great. So thank you, Jack and Joe. Excellent evenings on both, very well done. I, I've, I've heard nothing but compliments from parents since I was at both for having children graduating both levels. Nothing but compliments about how well both evenings were. Everybody was very impressed and happy with both evenings. Alright, anything else? Alright, then when's our next meeting? What?
August twenty-first.
Right, yes, okay. Yep, so just one meeting in August, again, too. Alright, so hearing nothing else, um, so I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jeff. And I'll take these two guys over here. Jeff and David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.